Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, February 19th, 2019. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I'm your deputy city clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Nick Miller. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Ricky Burgess presents Bill Number 1396. Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Pittsburgh of Certain Property Having Been Placed for Sale to Adjoning Property Owners in Conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh's Sideyard Program. 40 Carver. 526 Lincoln. 6623 Shetland. 0 Hazelwood. 737 Industry. 321 Cedarhurst. And 0 California. Bill Number 1397. Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired by the City of Pittsburgh at Tax Sales. 504 Lowell. 506 Lowell. 6513. 6501. 6503. And 6507 Meadow. 27 Tecumseh. 5011 Little. 0 Letty Hill. 3821 Wilkesboro. 1617 Brownsville. And 0 Brownsville. Bill Number 1398. Resolution Repealing Items in Resolutions Approved on Various Dates Which Authorize the Sale of Property in Various Wardths of the City of Pittsburgh Due to an Incompletion of Sale. 515 Lowell. And 17 Curtain. Bill Number 1399. Resolution Providing for the Filing of Petitions for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired at Tax Sales to a City of Pittsburgh-Based Community Development Corporation for the Purpose of Advancing the Interests of the Community Through Development. 846 East Ohio. And 302 West Burgess. Councilwoman Deb Gross presents Bill Number 1415. Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning, Article I, Section 902.03, Zoning Map, and Article III, Overlay Zoning Districts, Chapter 907, Development Overlay Districts, Section 907.02, iPod, Interim Planning Overlay District, by Adding a New Section 907.02.K to Establish a New Interim Planning Overlay District for the Inclusionary Housing Interim Planning Overlay District. This bill is sponsored by Councilwoman Gross. Councilwoman Darlene Harris presents Bill Number 1400. Resolution Providing that the City of Pittsburgh Enter into a Professional Services Agreement and/or Contracts with Consultants and/or Service Providers for Professional Services in Connection with the Civil Service and MPOETC Required Assessment and Evaluation of Public Safety Candidates, Cost Not to Exceed $160,000. Councilman Daniel Lavelle presents Bill Number 1401. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter on Behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an Agreement with the National Association of State Boating Law Administration for Training and Certification Services Regarding Public Safety Boat Operations at a Sum Not to Exceed $360,000. Councilman Corey O'Connor presents Bill Number 1395. Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title I, Administrative, Article IX, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities, Chapter 179A, Clean Pittsburgh Commission, Section 179A.01, Subsections A and G, 170A.02, Commission Members, Subsections A and B, 179A.03, Meetings and Chair, Subsection G, 179A.04, Powers and Duties of the Commission, Subsection D, 179A.05, Reauthorization of the Commission, and 179A.06, Effective Date to Update the Purposes, Meeting Rules, Membership, Activities, and to Remove the Requirement that the Commission be Reauthorized. Bill Number 1402. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into a Cooperation Agreement with the Alliance for Infants and Toddlers for the Shared Operation and Administration of the City of Pittsburgh Child Care Quality Fund for a Period of Two Years from the Opening of the Fund in an Amount Not to Exceed $2 Bill Number 1403. Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for UPMC Mercy Vision and Rehabilitation Hospital at UPMC Mercy, which is Located at 1626 Locust Street. Bill Number 1404. Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for Proposed Gray Street Residence at the Intersection of Gray Street and Mann Councilwoman Teresa Kelsmith presents Bill Number 1405. Resolution Authorizing the Transfer by the City of Pittsburgh to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation of Certain Public Right-of-Way, Slope Easement, and Temporary Construction Easement Rights on Certain Property of the 22nd Ward of the City of Pittsburgh to Secure the Right-of-Way for the West Ohio Street Bridge Construction Bill Number 1406. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure of the City of Pittsburgh to Apply for Grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund to Construct Streetscape Updates to Walnut Street in the Shady Side Neighborhoods Business District. In the Event the Grant is Awarded, this Resolution Provides for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $250,000 for this Stated Purpose. Bill Number 1407. Resolution Vacating a Portion of Spruce Way Situated in the 6th Ward, 7th Council District of the City of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 1408. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, I'm sorry, Director of Department of Public Works of the City of Pittsburgh to Apply for Grant Funding from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund to Expand and Redevelop Homewood Park. In the Event the Grant is Awarded, this Resolution Provides for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $250,000 for this Stated Purpose. Bill Number 1409. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works of the City of Pittsburgh to Apply for Grant Funding from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund to Renovate the Jefferson Recreation Center. In the Event this Grant is awarded, this Resolution Provides for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $250,000 for this Stated Purpose. Bill Number 1410. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works of the City of Pittsburgh to Apply for Grant Funding from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund to Replace the Robert E. Williams Community Center. In the Event that this Grant is awarded, this Resolution Provides for an Agreement Not to Exceed $250,000 for this Stated Purpose. Bill Number 1411. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works of the City of Pittsburgh to Apply for Grant Funding from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund to Renovate the South Side Park. In the Event the Grant is awarded, this Resolution Provides for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $250,000 for this Stated Purpose. Bill Number 1412. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works of the City of Pittsburgh to Apply for Grant Funding from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund to Renovate Stevens School in Council District 2. In the Event this Grant is awarded, this Resolution Provides for Expenditures Not to Exceed $250,000 for this Stated Purpose. And Councilman Bruce Kraus presents Bill Number 1413. Communication from Kevin Paulus, Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Approvals on Behalf of the Department of Public Works for Javon Breiten, Andrew Ficarilli, Bill Meisco, Tom Samstag, Shawn Traynor, and Keith Younger, per the Acting Pay Policy Revised in 2008. That concludes the reading of the legislation. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
And welcome to the regular meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Tuesday, February 19th, 2019. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mrs. Harris, Mr. Lavelle, Mr. O'Connor, Mrs. Kelsmith, Ms. Strausberger, Mr. Kraus present.
Here.
Six members present.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, this morning, we have some very, very special guests, both from Phillips and Westwood Elementary. We are going to stand, if you would please. They are going to lead us in the presentation of the Pledge of Allegiance, and then they have a presentation that they're going to make afterwards. So, are you guys ready?
Ready.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You did great, guys. Thank you very much. Okay. Now, come on up, Cindy. Tell us a little bit about the presentation that we're going to see and sort of clue our viewers in.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Cindy Falls and I represent District 7 from the school board and...
I'm Veronica Edwards and I represent District 9.
Again, good morning to everyone. And the children are here. They're going to do a song and they're going to do a poem. And we are here to celebrate Black History Month. And the children are very excited and have been very good in the practice. So, we're going to turn it over to them and let them be the stars. So, thank you very much.
Dr. Lou Ferrigni had a dream. Marlisa King had a dream. For all people to be treated equally. So, when you see something wrong, be strong, stand up, and say, "That's not okay."
Think about Martin. Think about caring. Think about peace all around the world. Think about Martin. Think about loving. Think about peace all around the world.
Members, ready? One, two.
I was passing by my brother called for me and he said to me, "You better take time in life, take time in life. You better take time in life, you better take time in life. You do not far ways to go." I was passing by my brother called for me and he said to me, "You better take time in life, take time in life. You better take time in life, you better take time in life, 'cause you got far ways to go." I was passing by my brother called to me and he said to me, "You better take time in life, take time in life. You better take time in life, you better take time in life, 'cause you got far ways to go." I was passing by my brother called to me and he said to me, "You better take time in life, take time in life. You better take time in life, you better take time in life, 'cause you got far ways to go." I was passing by my brother called to me and he said to me, "You better take time in life, take time in life. You better take time in life, you better take time in life, you do got far ways to go." Checking? Okay. Bon you wa, bon you wa-o. Bon you wa, bon you wa, bon you wa-o. Bon you wa, bon you wa, bon you wa-o. Bon you wa, bon you wa, bon you wa-o. Bon you wa, bon you wa, bon you wa-o. Bon you wa, bon you wa, bon you wa-o. Bon you wa, bon you wa, bon you wa-o. Bon you wa, bon you wa, bon you wa-o. Bon you wa, bon you wa, bon you wa-o. Bon you wa, bon you wa, bon you wa-o. Bon you wa, bon you wa, bon you wa-o. Bon you wa, bon you wa, bon you wa-o. Bon you wa, bon you wa, bon you wa-o. Bon you wa, bon you wa, bon you wa-o.
Good. That was great. A lot of thumbs up. You guys were great. I'm sure they're going to get you drinks on the way back. Hey, Mike, you want to close it out for us?
Good morning, everyone.
Great job, Senator. Thanks, everybody. All right, Phillips.
Do your homework.
Good job.
How I'm doing right now? Good morning, everybody. As you may know, I've been, I work for the City of Pittsburgh Public Works for going on 31 years, but I've been doing this for going on 27 years. And we usually have guest readers at the schools that I would like to see council people to come and read to the kids and tell them what experience that you may have or what you'd like to do. And you know, you'd be surprised that kids would ask you a lot of questions. But my disappointment is, when I do send guest readers information down, it's always that "we can't do this," "we can't do that," and I think that's a mistake. You know, we're all City of Pittsburgh kids at one time and everybody read to us. And I just give like five minutes of your time just to come, sit down with the kids, read to them, you know, tell them what you'd like to do, you know? They ask, they ask a lot of questions, especially kindergarten, because they're very, they want to know. And I'm just saying, there is a guest reader program coming up at Miller Friday, February 22nd at 9:00 a.m. If you want to come, you're more than welcome. It's called The School. But this is, I've been doing this a long time, so it's fun for me, but it'd be more important if you guys would just show your face just for five minutes. It would, it would make a whole lot of difference. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, and thank you, guys, for being here this morning. Very much. Okay, so that will take us into our proclamation portion of the council meeting, of which we have no proclamations this morning, but we do have one will of council to be presented. And Councilwoman Strausberger, I believe you're going to present the will of council? Why don't we, we'll wait one second until everybody has a chance to leave the chamber. How's that? Madam Clerk, let's just wait one second while they, I thought maybe they were going to stay behind. They were great. Okay, Madam Clerk, if you would then, please.
Councilwoman Strausberger presents, whereas SEIU 32BJ is the largest union of property service workers in the U.S. with more than 163,000 members along the eastern seaboard. In western Pennsylvania, 6,400 members work as commercial office cleaners, security officers, school and university workers who fight to defend workers' rights and make our community stronger. And whereas, 1532BJ members were displaced from their jobs last year at Nova Place on the north side when building owner Pharaoh's Properties unexpectedly replaced a 32BJ contractor with checklist facility maintenance. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby denounces all illegal and unfair labor practices. We stand with 32BJ members, our residents, the hardworking women and men of Pittsburgh, and we hereby demand that Pharaoh's Properties hires law-abiding contractors.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion then a second, please? Do we have discussion from, yes, Councilwoman, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate other council members so quickly joining, joining on and co-sponsoring this resolution. I know that, I believe all council members wanted to be a part of it. The first to jump on board were Councilwoman Teresa Kelsmith and Councilman Daniel Lavelle. And I know that there were others that attended a rally at Nova Place last Friday. I was not able to be there personally, but I know other council members were present. This is, this is obviously just standing with the 15, not only the 15, 32BJ members who were displaced from their jobs at Nova Place, but you know, those who are in the service industry in general, who are doing, doing hard, you know, good work every day and deserve to be paid a fair wage and have fair benefits. And you know, in this case, there were files, charges, charges filed with the National Labor Relations Board, and the NLRB issued a complaint against checklist facility maintenance after finding evidence that they actually did violate federal law. So, this was a real grievance that was, that should be taken seriously. And all these members, one is to get their jobs back and two, make a fair wage. So, that's where we're, why we're standing in solidarity with them.
Yep, thank you. Thanks. And all members have signed on. Councilwoman Gross?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that my office got back to you and I am happy to co-sponsor. Thank you for bringing it forward.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, everyone. With no further discussion, then, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No abstentions, great. The will of council passes, and then that'll take us into public comment. Anyone wishing to speak before City Council this morning, of course, has three minutes in which to do so. I would like to remind everyone here that our rules of council are clear. in stating that comment is limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are at this time or could at another time come before this council. We do not permit profanity, and we will maintain order at all times. We ask that you would please begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for our public record. The green light will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute to summarize your thoughts. When the red light comes on, then your time has expired. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. My name is Dante Betels. I'm a resident of Pittsburgh's north side area. I'm also one of the displaced workers from north side of Nova Place. I just wanna start by saying the support by our elected officials is overwhelming, and on behalf of all the displaced workers from Nova Place, we appreciate how you've stood with us in the past and now. And thank you for issuing a will of council to let Checklist and other companies thinking of mistreating their employees know that cold-hearted actions will not be tolerated in our city. It's been seven months since we've lost our jobs, and we're still struggling. But for me, I don't know if I'm gonna work day-to-day. I've gotten two part-time jobs that are both had me on call, and honestly, nothing replaces the work that I did at Nova Place. When I was at Nova Place, I had guaranteed daily work and a steady paycheck, which you know, provides the security needed to support yourself and pay your bills and things of that nature. And Checklist honestly just needs to abide by federal labor law. Checklist is a minority-owned contractor that is taking advantage and getting over on minority workers, and Checklist's actions toward us are quite unfathomable. It's, it's pretty disheartening to know that someone who's also a minority can look at you as just another minority. And how can Pittsburghers take advantage of other Pittsburghers who just wanna, you know, do good for themselves and help support their families and things like that? Those who have fought for justice before me are rolling over in their graves, and I am encouraged and the same strength and fortitude that African-American civil rights leaders and union workers exercised in their fight for justice before me, I will take and I'll use that same strength to continue doing so until we get our jobs back. Pharaohs should want better for their workers that maintain its facilities. They play a part in this seven-month saga, and they too can help right this wrong. Thank you, City Council, for doing what you can to stand with us and call out inequity. Thank you.
Thank you, Dante. Thanks for being here. Maybe we have our next speaker, please? Okay, Dr. Miller, good morning.
Dr. Rollman Miller, Villasover and Lawrenceville, Little Intelligence Society candidate for president twenty-twenty. American Physical Society member. Four through eight March two thousand nineteen is the APS National Meeting in Boston, Massachusetts. Anybody wanna go? I and the CGSIIGIS, both creations of mine, now get the African Physics Newsletter, the APN, which is about physics activities in Africa by Africans. District Six and District Nine, you have access to the APN no matter what Mr. Lavelle or Mr. Burgess do. Concern of City Council is the publication of the best information at the highest level of intelligence concerning the public behavior of elected counselors and mayor. Mr. Kraus, City District Representatives, and Mr. Pidudo. Is it illegal for a citizen to employ an investigator to discover publicly available information about counselors and mayor to create generalizations about this information and to distribute these generalizations to the public? We think not. Suppose the investigator discovers evidence that a district representative, a city counselor, is having sex in his or her office in the city council area of the fifth floor of this city county building, CCB. Mr. Kraus, is there anything illegal for a counselor representing District Seven, Three, or any other district to have sex in her or his CCB fifth-floor office? Would such a sex act be unethical? An act of malfeasance which is punishable by impeachment? Is there any rule of Pittsburgh Council prohibiting dissemination of information about discovery of such a sex act in a Pittsburgh City Council office involving a counselor during Pittsburgh City Public Comment? Is there anything City Council or Mayor can do to legally interdict district, city-wide, or nationwide distribution via any medium of witness testimonial, transcriptive, oral, or visual records or recordings which we seek of a Pittsburgh City Counselor in a CCB fifth-floor office OV or A sex act? We have been busy.
Okay. Thank you again, Dr. Miller. Celeste, good morning, welcome.
Good morning. I do wanna take a moment to lift up our partners in our coalition at Pittsburgh United, SEIU thirty-two BJ. We always wanna support their fight, so thank you, Cory, for coming down and doing that. So my name is Celeste Scott. I'm the Housing Justice Organizer for Pittsburgh United, and Pittsburgh is at a critical moment. I just wanted to come down and go on record in support of the iPod Inclusionary Zoning Policy that's being introduced today by Councilwoman Gross. And we have an opportunity to be a national leader, not just in terms of economic revival, but equitable development that puts people first. To be truly livable, the revitalization of Pittsburgh must lift up every neighborhood in the city. Revitalization is benefiting some, but the fabric of many low-income neighborhoods and communities of color like Homewood, Hazelwood, and the Hill District are also being torn apart. When we talk about preserving neighborhoods, what we really should be focusing on is how we're improving the quality of life for the people who live in those neighborhoods. And from that lens, preserving housing affordability is a critical issue. I know that we all know that there is a housing crisis in the city, and that it's very urgent. And as housing prices have soared in many places like Lawrenceville, many of us have been displaced from neighborhoods that we called home for generations. We've been pushed out and forced to relocate to second and third ring suburbs without access to amenities like transportation, healthcare, and healthy places to get groceries. And I know what this is like, because I'm not just the Housing Justice Organizer for Pittsburgh United, but I personally experienced this. I'm not a District Seven resident now, but I used to be. A few years ago, as Lawrenceville began to grow, I was priced out of my neighborhood. I learned firsthand that while Lawrenceville is one of the fastest-growing neighborhoods in the city, the community didn't grow for everyone. Perhaps more than any other neighborhood in Pittsburgh, Lawrenceville has seen the most dramatic changes in recent years. And so I'm just here to support the interim planning overlay district and to really celebrate and thank Councilwoman Gross for leading on that and to hope that it passes and is implemented. And this is the beginning and not the end, and together we can keep Pittsburgh home. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Celeste. Thanks for being here.
Tag team, back again. Hi. Good morning. My name is Crystal Jennings. Speaking on behalf of Penn Plaza Support Asher Coalition, CJ Consulting, and also a contractor for Pittsburgh United. Just wanted to touch on AZ. Piggyback off of what Celeste has said. This is a very big thing for our city. Yes, it has to start somewhere, and it's gonna be started in Lawrenceville, but I'm asking the councilmen and women of the areas of Homewood, Hazelwood, Hill District, to think of the minority communities. And this fight, Ms. Councilwoman Gross, started in her district, but we need you guys to think about it in your district as well. Also, Westen, for, there's displacement going on all over, a little bit more than other neighborhoods, but in regards to AZ, we have to start somewhere. So I'm glad that we're starting, and you push for this in your district, but we need to think about the other communities and districts that are being affected or that will be affected in the future for this AZ, because we all need to live in very good housing. And hopefully, it will be affordable for all, because we are known as a city that is supposed to be affordable for all. So I just wanted to make sure that you guys understand the concern of this and the push for this for AZ. Thank you.
Thanks, Crystal. Thanks for being here. May we have our next speaker, please? Okay, good morning, welcome.
Hi. My name is Alethia Sims. Can't see out of these things. President of Coalition of Organized Residents of East Liberty. I said outside the press conference, I'll say it for the record, Councilman Gross, thank you, and I'm jealous. Very jealous. As someone who has watched my home community of, over the years, East Liberty become gentrified, watched hundreds of deeply subsidized units being replaced with market-rate luxury. Sorry, I don't think tax credit is all that affordable. Ask my neighbors. I think this inclusionary zoning is great. It's wonderful. I'm glad to see it's starting to happen in Pittsburgh, making it mandatory to have the developers consider affordable housing. And by affordable, I mean the people who've lost the fight for fifteen. No one should have to pay more than thirty percent of their gross income for housing, but it's happening too much. Just to keep a roof over their head if you're going to allow developers to come in and develop. Yeah, make this inclusionary zoning mandatory. Make sure that Pittsburgh is America's most livable city for everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, Alethia.
Alethia.
Alethia, thank you. Do we have any further speakers this morning? Anyone else wishing to speak before City Council this morning? Okay, we'll close the public comment portion of the council meeting. We'll go into presentation to papers. Good morning, Councilmen.
Good morning.
Councilman Burgess, our Chair of Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number thirteen ninety-six, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Certain Property Having Been Placed for Sale to Adjourning Property Owners in Conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh Side Yard Program, Items A through I, twenty twenty-two Fifth, five seventy-six Blessing, five twenty-six Lincoln, sixty-six twenty-three Shetland, zero Hazelwood, seven thirty-seven Industry, three twenty-one Cedarhurst, and zero California. Bill Number thirteen ninety-seven, Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired by the City at Tax Sale, Items A through L, five oh four and five oh six Laurel, sixty-five thirteen, sixty-five oh one and sixty-five oh three, sixty-five oh seven Meadow, sixty-eight twenty-four Fifth, twenty-seven Tecumseh, fifty eleven Light, zero Letty Hill, thirty-eight twenty-one Wilkesboro, sixteen seventeen Brownsville, and zero Brownsville. Bill Number thirteen ninety-eight, Resolution Repealing Items and Resolutions Approved on Various Dates, Which Authorizes Sale of Property in Various Ward to the City Due to the Incompletion of Sale, Items A and B, five fifteen Lowell, and seventeen Curtain. Bill Number thirteen ninety-nine, Resolution Providing for the Filing of Petitions for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired at Tax Sale to a City of Pittsburgh-Based Community Development Corporation for the Purpose of Advancing the Interest of the Community Through Redevelopment, Items A and B, eight forty-six East Ohio, and three oh two West Burgess.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Coghill, our Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers.
Thanks, Councilman. Councilwoman Gross, our Chair of Land Use and Economic Development. Good morning.
Mr. President, good morning.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number fourteen fifteen, Ordinance Amendment to Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zonin Article One, Zonin Map in Article Three, Overlay Zoning Districts, Development Overlay Districts, and Interim Planning Overlay District by Adding a New Section, nine oh seven oh two K, to Establish a New Interim Planning Overlay District for the Inclusionary Housing Interim Planning Overlay District.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Harris, our Chair of Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Harris presents Bill Number fourteen hundred, Resolution Providing that the City Enter into a Professional Services Agreement and/or Contract with Consultants and/or Service Providers for Professional Services in Connection with Civil Service and MPO ETC, Required Assessment and Evaluation of Public Safety Candidates, and Providing for Payment of the Cost Thereof Not to Exceed one hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Lavelle, our Chair of Public Safety Services.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number fourteen oh one, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Department of Public Safety to Enter on Behalf of the City into an Agreement with the National Association of State Voting Laws Administrators for Training and Certification Services Regarding Public Safety Vote Operations at a Sum Not to Exceed three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and Providing for the Payment of Cost Thereof.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman O'Connor, our Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number thirteen ninety-five, Ordinance Amendment in Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title One Administrative Article Nine, Boards and Commissions and Authorities, Reauthorization of the Commission, and one seventy-nine AO six, Effective Date to Update the Purposes, Meeting Rules, Membership Activities, and Remove the Requirement That the Commission Be Reauthorized. Bill Number fourteen oh two, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into a Corporation Agreement with the Alliance for Infants and Toddlers for the Shared Operation and Administration of the City of Pittsburgh City Childcare Quality Fund for a Period of Two Years From the Opening of the Fund in an Amount Not to Exceed two million dollars, and for the Payment of the Cost Thereof. Bill Number fourteen oh three, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh Official Sewer Facilities Plan for UPMC Mercy Vision and Rehabilitation Hospital at UPMC Mercy sixteen twenty-six Locust Street. Bill Number fourteen oh four, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh Official Sewer Facilities Plan for Proposed Gray Street Residence at the Intersection of Gray Street and Mann Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Kail Smith, our Chair of Public Work Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Kail Smith presents Bill Number fourteen oh five, Resolution Authorizing the Transfer by the City to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation of Certain Public Right-of-Way Slope Easement and Temporary Construction Easement Rights on Certain Property of the Twenty-Second Ward of the City to Secure the Right-of-Way for the West Ohio Street Bridge Construction Project. Bill Number fourteen oh six, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Apply for Grant Funding for the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund to Construct Streetscape Updates to Walnut Street and the Shadyside Neighborhoods Business District. In the Event the Grant is Awarded, this Resolution Provide for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this Stated Purpose. Bill Number fourteen oh seven, Resolution Vacating a Portion of Spruce Way Situated in the Sixth Ward, Seventh Council District in the City. Bill Number fourteen oh eight, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works of the City to Apply for Grant Funding from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund to Expand and Redevelop Homewood Park. In the Event the Grant is Awarded, this Resolution Provides for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Bill Number fourteen oh nine, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Department of Public Works to Apply for Grant Funding from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund to Renovate the Jefferson Recreation Center. In the Event the Grant is Awarded, this Resolution Provide for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Bill fourteen ten, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Department of Public Works to Apply for Grant Funding from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund to Replace the Robert E. Williams Community Center. In the Event the Grant is Awarded, this Resolution Provide for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Bill Number fourteen eleven, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Department of Public Works to Apply for Grant Funding for the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund to Renovate the South Side Park. In the Event the Grant is Awarded, this Resolution Provide for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Bill Number fourteen twelve, $250,000. Bill Number 1412, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Apply for Grant Funding from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund to Renovate Stevens School in Council District Two. In the Event the Grant is Awarded, this Resolution Provide for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $250,000 for this Stated Purpose.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Strasburger, our Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair has one communication. I'll need a motion to receive and file, please. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Council President Kraus presents Bill Number 1413, Communication from Kevin Powless, Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Approvals on Behalf of the Department of Public Works for Javon Broughton, Andrew Fracoli, Bill Mizko, Tom Simstag, Sean Traynor, and Keith Younger, and Per the Acting Pay Policy Revised in March 2008.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I need a motion to receive and file, please.
Your move.
Second.
Okay, discussion, Councilwoman Harris.
Motion to interview?
No, this is just a communication of a pay grade, if I remember that bill correctly.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, thank you. No further discussion, all in favor, aye. Opposed abstentions, thank you very much, received and filed. Thank you. Our next order of business, excuse me, then, is reports of committee for final action. Councilman Burgess, our Chair of Finance and Law, begins. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1390, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for February 13, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1307, Resolution Amending Resolution 29 of 2019, Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Kramer, Mainz, and Associate in an Amount Not to Exceed $19,000 in Full and Final Settlement of an Action Filed with the Pittsburgh Human Relations Commission and Cross-Filed with the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission by Changing the Budget Year from 2018 to 2019. Bill Number 1344, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Bureau of Neighborhood Empowerment to Execute Relevant Agreement to Receive Grant Funding from the Benter Foundation. This Funding will Support the Imagination Library Program for the City through the Dollywood Foundation, Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $250,000. Bill Number 1345, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh City Code at Title II Fiscal Article IX Property Taxes to Include Applications Filed During the Period of June 30 of 2017 Until Legislation Establishing a New Program Has Been Adopted or the Program Is Terminated. Bill Number 1346, Resolution Authorizing Issuance of a Warrant in the Sum of $4,565 in Favor of Daniel Bendis for Damage to the Sidewalk and Dryway of His Resident at 4345 McCaslin Street. Bill Number 1347, Resolution Providing for an Agreement for Payment of the City's Share of the 2019 Operating Expenses to the Allegheny County Central Tax Collection District for Tax Collection Costs Not to Exceed $8,065.51. Bill Number 1356, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 863 by Reducing Bet for Dwelling's Choice Neighborhood by $1,500 and Increasing Economic Development and Housing by $1,500. I'm sorry, $1,500,000 and Increasing Economic Development and Housing by $1,500,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading of the title of these bills. Under our Committee of Finance and Law, do we have further discussion on any of the bills? Okay, seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Our next committee is our Committee on Public Work Services. Our Chair is Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents Bill Number 1391, Report of the Committee on Public Works for February 13, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1354, Resolution Vacating a Portion of Dolomps Place in the 12th Ward, 9th Council District of the City. Bill Number 1355, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Set forth Financial Obligations and Maintenance Responsibility for the Project and the Pedestrian Facilities with PennDOT. Local Costs Associated with Work to Be Done on SR 0885 ADA Ramps and Upgraded Black Traffic Signal Poles Being Constructed and Inspected by PennDOT, and Further Providing for Reimbursement to PennDOT to the Cost Estimated to be $77,707.50.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Public Works Services Committee. Do we have further discussion on any of the bills? Okay, seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called, and those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills having received then the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Next, we have our Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Our Chair is Councilwoman Deborah Gross.
President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1392, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for February 13, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1351, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 503, Providing for the Implementation of a Residential Sticker Parking Program in the Beachview Neighborhood pursuant to Pittsburgh Code Chapter 549 so as to amend the streets and remove addresses including in Area T. Bill Number 1352, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 574, Providing for the Implementation of a Residential Sticker Parking Program in the Squirrel Hill Neighborhood pursuant to Pittsburgh Code Chapter 549 so as to amend the streets and remove addresses included in Area K. Bill Number 1357, Resolution Amending Resolution 532, Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Finance to Enter into a Contract on Behalf of the City with the Pittsburgh Land Bank for Administrative Service for the 2018 Land Bank Implementation at a Cost Not to Exceed $200,000 in Order to Allow Expenditures in 2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Land Use and Economic Development Committee. Do we have further discussion on the bills? Forgive me one second here. Councilwoman?
I would like to recommit Bill 2019 1352 regarding RPP Area K until I have further discussion with some of the residents of the street.
Sure, happy to do so.
Second.
We have a motion to recommit Bill 1352, a request from Councilwoman Strasburger. We have a second. Do we have further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, aye.
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 Opposed abstentions. Seeing none, Councilwoman, we will recommit 1352, and it will be on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Thanks, Councilwoman. Beyond that, is there further discussion on any of the bills under Land Use and Economic Development? Okay, seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills having received then the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Next, we have our Committee on Urban Recreation. Our Chair is Councilman Coghill.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1393, Report of the Committee on Urban Recreation for February 13, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1348, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 444 in Order to Rename the Special Summer Food Service Trust Fund as Special Food Service Programs Trust Fund. The City's Department of Parks and Recreation now seeks to rename the Special Summer Food Service Trust Fund as Special Food Service Programs Trust Fund in order to reflect that additional food service programming is conducted throughout the school year and not merely the summer. Bill Number 1349, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Parks and Rec. and/or the Director of the Department of Public Safety and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with individual amounts of $10,000 or less with performers, instructors, artists, referees, and persons with specialized skills in connection with the Department of Recreational and Instructional Programs and Special Event Services. Bill Number 1350, Resolution Providing for an Agreement Lease and/or License Agreement for the Use of Certain Property for Senior Facilities for the Provision of Center Services to Seniors in an Amount Not to Exceed $87,010, chargeable to and payable from the Seniors' Community Program Trust Fund in the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Urban Recreation Committee. Do we have further discussion on any of the bills? Seeing no further discussion, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills would vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Thank you, Madam, or aye, thank you.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you very much. Sorry, my phone was blowing up here this morning. Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills having then received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Our final committee of the morning is our Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. Our Chair is Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 1394, Report of the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Assets Management for February 13, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1379, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of KMDDI in the Amount of $17,902.80 over the allowable RFQ limit for changes to the design and equipment to the City Stat Room as provided to the Department of Innovation and Performance and the Department of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of these bills under our Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management Committee. Do you have any further discussion on the bills? Okay, seeing none, these bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills then having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. The Chair does have a few very brief meeting announcements. A cablecast public hearing is scheduled today, this afternoon at 1:30 PM. It relates to Bill 1272, which relates to the naming of a section of the Three Rivers Heritage Trail after former Mayor Tom Murphy. Then tomorrow, Wednesday, February 20, at 9:30 AM, we are having pre-agenda interviews. Council will interview appointees to the Urban Redevelopment Authority and to the Allegheny County Authority, forgive me, Allegheny County Sanitary Authority prior to Council's Standing Committee meeting. And then immediately following the interviews, of course, Council will go into its Standing Committee meeting. Then also tomorrow, we have a cablecast public hearing, which is scheduled again at 1:30 PM. It relates to Bill 1008, as it relates to zoning changes on Larimer Avenue. Do we have anything further from members? Councilwoman Gross.
Right, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to acknowledge this morning that I handed in the inclusionary zoning interim planning overlay district legislation for Lawrenceville specifically. And earlier in my press conference, I acknowledged that here at council, this conversation started when Councilman Lavelle submitted legislation in January of 2015, and it's February of 2019 now. But it's been a very long process with the Affordable Housing Task Force, so much citizen involvement, recommending the tools that we need citywide, our very lengthy conversations about Housing for All and Opportunities for All, and discussions and public hearings on funding sources and the creation of the Housing Opportunity Fund, and so many peoples work on that. But also, the work that you might not have seen is the work that was happening in the Lawrenceville neighborhood specifically. So many community meetings on affordability, going back years, have been working, have been happening in parallel to the conversations that we've been having here. And in the last year, I have an extensive list in front of me of the work that Lawrenceville United has done, working with my office to do community outreach. I sent a mailing to every household in Lawrenceville. There have been three sets of giant community meetings. They've been having these discussions also at block watch committees. They did specific robo-calls. They canvassed themselves door-to-door in Lawrenceville. So this is also a product of the work that Lawrenceville was doing themselves, that they had this kind of clarity of vision, that their goals really crystallized around this one of the tools in the toolbox. So I just want to acknowledge that and thank them for their work, and just to kind of fill you all in that this work was happening in parallel. Thank you.
Congratulations, Councilwoman. I know how hard you've worked on this, and it's a good day for you, and I personally want to congratulate you. Refresh my memory, does this then go to Planning Commission for review and recommendation?
Yeah, it will be on standing committee a week from tomorrow, and then it's required to hold it pending report and recommendation from the Planning Commission. So there will be much more public process in front of us as well that is happening at the official level.
Yep, that's what I figured. You'll have my support.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Kell Smith?
Thank you. I also want to congratulate Councilwoman Gross, because she has worked really hard on this. And she was really mindful that in my conversations with her, that, you know, what may be needed in Lawrenceville is not necessarily what's needed in the West End. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund said, or Task Force realized that we have an absence of balance, of we have an overabundance of affordable housing. We need some market rate housing in our area to stabilize our area. So what may be needed for one area may not be what's best for another. And so I know you really worked really, really difficult on this, and I really listened to a lot of people, and I just think that you are such an advocate for your community, and they should be really thankful for how you really represent them. And I tell people that all the time. I said, they might not see her here saying some of the things that she's saying back there, but she's a fighter for her community and really a strong advocate, as is Reverend Burgess has been for this affordable housing. And I think sometimes you hear people in the community, you know, question or challenge some of the things that are being said or not being done. You know, you don't know what can be done until you get here, and sometimes you think you're going to be a rock star, and you get here and you're really very quickly bought up to speed about the way things go here. When you mention how many years this has been in the works, when I think back, the West End Circle was a plan from 1979, and was just, you know, done about 10 years ago. So, I mean, it takes a long time. Government is a long process. I said, I hope I see some of the things I've worked on for so many years come to fruition, was actually before I actually leave for office, while I'm actually still alive. So I don't have that many more years. But I just want to congratulate you on your work for that. I also want to thank the Mayor's Office, and the Mayor particularly, for working with the Women's Caucus on the early pre-K funding. And back when we first formed the Women's Caucus, we decided what was it that we wanted to work on? And everybody got their thing to work on. And this was one of the things that the Women's Caucus decided they wanted to work on. And we worked with the Mayor from the very beginning. He was supportive of this, willing to work with the women. He said, you know, bring to me some of the things you want to do. He brought some ideas to the table. So I just want to thank him for his commitment to this. But I want to really acknowledge the work of the Women's Caucus, because this was one of the very first things that we brought to the table. Councilwoman Gross, you were very instrumental in that as well. And all my colleagues were really, and together, it shows how when we all worked together, you know, eventually, you know, others put in other pieces and added to it. So, you know, when we work together with the administration, it shows what we can do. I'll be honest with you, I have my concerns about early pre-K, because to really do early pre-K in the City of Pittsburgh, you need $70 million, not $2 million. I'm starting to think, and I was just telling Councilwoman Strasburger, maybe what we would be better off doing is putting that money towards, they have community-based free childcare programs, you know, for infants in places like Maine and other places, where people can actually not have to worry about their children, their babies, or infants. And that $2 million would actually pay for free centers in north, south, east, west, and central of the city that would pay for salary, would pay for a place. And so that would actually make a difference immediately. And so I'm thinking, maybe there's some other ways that we should talk to the Mayor and work with the Mayor. Because if you look at Maine, they, in other places, they do have free community-based daycare centers for... have free, community-based daycare centers, for quality daycare centers, where you don't have to worry about leaving your infant in harm's way or with someone who you don't know. They're just done really right, and it's not going to cost you an arm and leg. People can actually go to work and helps them. So I think that there's a lot of, a lot of things that we should look at, just because it's the new catchphrase is, you know, now let's everybody worry about early pre-K. I think there's a lot of benefit to it, but there's also some responsibility on the school district's part for early pre-K, and I don't want to negate their responsibility by the city of Pittsburgh taking up more of things that are outside of our purview. But at the same time, I think that this was a good thing. I'm thankful that the mayor was, mayor listened. I'm thankful that he was responsive, thankful that he put it forward, but I also am very grateful to the women's caucus and to the council of the city of Pittsburgh for their part in all this.
Thanks, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your remarks. Councilwoman Gross?
Yeah, if you don't mind, just a brief comment. I also acknowledge that at the press conference, that it's a really good day, that we're also going to see the money actually move to support childcare capacity across the city, because it has been, my notes go back, I pulled up my file yesterday, I think it was October of 2014 when we had that meeting, we first started talking about creating a childcare fund. And first, it was $15,000 and $250,000, and then it was just over a year ago, we finally got the $2 million there. So it'll be really great to see it actually get out to do the work in the community, and we really appreciate the administration's work in figuring out how to do that.
Councilwoman and I have this conversation often, you know, we, we're outside the council while we're working to get here, we have one idea of what it's like to actually be here and get things done, and then when you get here, you have the realization of how the system really works and how we have to learn to work within it to accomplish the things that we wish to accomplish. And I think you're a great council. I think you have a good heart and a good mind, and we put forward good initiatives. It does take some time, but we're tenacious, we keep after them, and they bear fruit. And today's one of those days that is bearing fruit, and it's a good day. And so congratulations.
I just wanted to say, when I was first running for office, I remember thinking, you know, I was 50 years old, I had never been involved in politics, I hated politics, I was going to come in here and I was going to change this world and straighten this place out, because, you know, we need to get all these projects done in our area. Well, I'm still working on it, I'm still working on some of the first projects I was